Date of August sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Item J, approve a revision to the Sales and Special Events Coordinator job description in the Parks and Recreation Department as approved in the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget, changing the title to Special Events Coordinator and assigning it to pay grade one-ten of the city's salary table with an effective date of August seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Item K, approve a revision to the Recreation Coordinator job description in the Parks and Recreation Department as approved in FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget and assign it to pay grade one-ten of the city's salary table with an effective date of August seventeenth, twenty twenty one. Item L is approve a revision to the Parks and Facilities Coordinator job description in the Parks and Recreation Department as approved in the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget, changing the job title to Parks and Recreation Facilities Maintenance Manager and assigning it to pay grade one-fifteen of the city's salary table with an effective date of August seventeenth, twenty twenty one. And item M, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty-twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of one million, three hundred and nine thousand, fifty-six dollars and seventy-four cents, and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two in the amount of one million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Make a motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It is a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes.
Yes.
Sorry. I already marked you out.
You marked me absent? Come on!
This is what happens. I'm sorry.
Louis, cut it out, Louis. I'm just trying to do my part here.
Paid her to do that, so. All right, item three. Consider adoption of a resolution number nine-nine-seven-two-one, authorizing the calling and holding of an election in the City of Moore, Oklahoma, for the purpose of submitting to the registered qualified electors of said city, the question of the issuance of a general obligation bonds and said city, of said city, in an amount not to exceed the sum of eight million, six hundred and forty thousand dollars, to provide funds for the purpose of constructing, reconstructing, improving or repairing streets or bridges in said city, of the issuance of general obligation bonds of said city in an amount not to exceed the sum of eight million, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, to provide funds for the purpose of constructing and equipping of a new animal shelter with all of said improvements to be owned exclusively by said city, and levying and collecting an annual tax in addition to all other taxes upon all the taxable property in said city for the payment of the interest and principal on said bonds.
Vice Mayor and Council, the last council meeting, you were, received presentations on the street project and the animal shelter project. The animal shelter project has been ongoing for some time, as you know, and the street project came about just because of the weather in the last year really has taken a toll on its street, on our streets, and we felt like we needed the, some additional funds to catch up and stay even with the power curve. These are general obligation bonds. I've had numerous conversations with our financial advisor, Chris Gander, and we feel that with, with the way we will draw these bonds down, in addition to the twenty-eighteen general obligation bond issue, that we will be able to stay at sixteen and a half mils. There is a possibility that we might come to council for a short-term borrowing that we would get from a bank that would later be repaid with a, an additional drawdown on the general obligation bonds. The interest rates are comparable, so we, we feel, we feel pretty comfortable with that, but I know it's very important to the council that we try and stay at our sixteen and a half mils, and with a plan that Mr. Gander and I have, we feel like we'd be able to do that. Be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, recommend approval.
Make a motion.
One of the questions that I've received from citizens is, we've passed the bonds for Eastern and Twelfth Street, we've passed the bonds for the railroad underpass, and, and they haven't seen, I mean, even though work is being done, they have not seen that work. So as we go out and do the town hall meetings, I think it's important that their, part of that presentation be where we are on those projects and what we've done, and when those can be expected to be completed.
Oh, absolutely. There's an item a little further down on the agenda that if approved by council, one of the buildings there on Fourth Street will be demolished, so there'll be obvious evidence that, that things are moving along, where people, they actually be able to see something that's happened above ground. The utility relocations on Turner Avenue are ongoing, and so hopefully we will, we'll be able to begin construction on Turner Avenue later this year, and then also on Eastern Avenue later this year. So, I mean, I, I agree, it doesn't, it doesn't look like much has happened, but a lot has happened, and we are actually pretty close. So we're, you know, in the last half of August, and so, you know, we're five months away from the end of the year, so we're pretty close.
Yep, and, and I know that things are going on behind the scenes, it's just hard for the citizens to see that.
Sure, sure.
I didn't mean to cut you off, Councilman Webb, do you want to?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item four, consider authorizing the execution of special election proclamation and notice pertaining to the proposed general obligation bond issue.
Vice Mayor and Council, this will just authorize this to be placed on the ballot for the November ninth special election. Recommend approval.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item five, consider adoption of unemployment agreements with Chris Gander of BOK Financial Securities, Inc. as financial advisor, and Terry L. Hawkins of Phillips Murray, P, Murra, PC, as bond counsel in regard to the proposed general obligation bond issue.
Vice Mayor and Council, every time that you approve a, a bond issue to go before the voters, we initiate a contract with Mr. Hawkins and Mr. Gander. They do an excellent job for us. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Okay, item six is consider approval of a demolition contract with K&amp;M Wrecking, the lowest responsive bidder, in the amount of thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for demolition of the building located at one-twenty-three Southeast Fourth Street.
Building, and so we're asking that, we did receive three bids, the, the lowest responsible bid was K&amp;M Wrecking, and the total cost of their bid was thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars, and we'd ask that you authorize us to proceed.
Jerry, this sounds like a silly question. They're taking all that down for thirty-six thousand?
Yes.
It has like four or five different?
I believe there are, there used to be four, I believe, in there, and so, yes.
No, some of them are empty now, okay.
Yeah, they're all empty now.
Yeah.
Now, let's turn it down, haul it off.
Yeah, I know, I was like, man.
Deal.
I make a motion, we approve.
When do you, when?
Before they change their minds.
If it passes, when do we start?
Um, I believe they probably will start within the next two to three weeks, and it should only take them about a week or so.
Okay.
demolish.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, call for the vote, please?
Who seconded?
Melissa.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item seven, seven is consider acceptance of a fifty-foot temporary construction easement north to south, a twenty-foot permanent sanitary sewer easement north to south, and a ten-foot permanent sanitary sewer easement west to east from the Cider Family Revocable Trust for construction and maintenance of the gravity flow sanitary sewer line serving the Southeast Basin Lift Station improvements.
Back in February, on February sixteenth of this year, you authorized staff to proceed with the eminent domain process for condemnation for the Cider Family Revocable Trust for a sewer line as part of the Southeast Basin improvements and sanitary sewer gravity flow We had been, we have proceeded with the, have been proceeding with the condemnation process, but we have also been working with the property owner and still continue to negotiate, and the property owner and city have come to an agreement that we would go ahead and, and pay the Ciders twenty-one thousand dollars for the easement that they're providing for the sewer line, as well as we would provide a, a small outfall that they could tap into to allow their home to be able to tie into the sewer line. They wanted two taps, and for those two, we would recommend that you approve the negotiation amount.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item eight, discuss, consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect two council members to serve on the Pioneer Library System, Moore RFP Selection Committee.
Vice Mayor and Council, as part of the budget, a hundred thousand dollars was allocated to library to help with their RFP process and potential new library. They're in the process of developing the RFP, and so, as was stated during the budget negotiations, that the city council would have a presence on that committee, and so tonight, just looking for two people that would like to serve on the committee.
I'd like to serve on, and if...
I'll do it, I'd like, unless somebody else.
I think that's perfect.
I would just communicate with us, I mean, I'd like to have some input in that via you guys as y'all go through this.
You want to do it?
No. I won't, I won't.
So you just want me to relay?
Yes, I do, I do.
So, do we, I just need to make a motion? I make a motion that we appoint Councilman Jason Blair and Councilman Adam Webb to the Library RFP Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Congratulations. Item nine, can, consider, and if deemed appropriate, approve a contract with Axon Enterprises, Inc., for a one-year term with the option of renewing for four consecutive terms for the purchase of fifty TASER seven conductive energy weapons in the amount of thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars using government services, administration, GSA, price-waving, competitive bidding pursuant to section seven dash two oh five, six.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted item. This will ensure that patrol officers working the street have the highest level of technology and equipment to utilize when, using less lethal force to protect citizens and protect officers. It's to be noted that the city manager recommended this decision, and it is a great decision that will actually make sure that all our officers have this up-to-date equipment. We currently have TASERS at a high level, but this is a significant increase in technology, which will increase the rate of success when they're deployed. We'd recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second to motion. I'd also, not part of the motion, but if we could get a demo, I think Brooks would be gladly allowed.
We could do it, sir, if you're open.
When they come in. So I would second the motion.
Rough crowd tonight. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item ten, consider approval of a new job description for a sports coordinator in the Parks and Recreation Department, approved in the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and assign it to pay grade one-ten of the city's salary table with an effective date of August seventeenth, twenty twenty one.
Vice Mayor and Council, the Parks and Recreation Department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft for a new job description for a sports coordinator. This position will be responsible for the indoor and outdoor sports and athletic programming throughout the Parks and Recreation Department. The position was requested and approved in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two annual budget. Staff recommends approval and placement in pay grade one-ten of the city's salary table approved by council in twenty sixteen, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. And Sue is here as well.
So this position will coordinate with the outside part, like the outside activities as well, not just at the station?
Correct.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item eleven, consider approval of a new job description for an animal shelter assistant at the animal welfare, at the animal welfare division of the Public Works Department, approved in the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget, and assign it to pay grade one-oh-four of the city's salary table with an effective date of August seventeenth, twenty twenty one.
Vice Mayor and Council, the Animal Shelter Division of the Public Works Department is requesting your approval of the submitted draft for a new job description for an animal shelter assistant. The animal shelter assistant will assist with intake, animal care and welfare, shelter cleaning, general office duties and adoptions. The position was requested and approved in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two annual budget. Staff recommends approval and placement in pay grade one-oh-four of the city's salary table as approved by council in twenty sixteen. If approved, the companion item will be on the MPWA consent docket at the next council meeting, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting. Item twelve is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of a regular Moore Public Works Authority Meeting held August second, twenty twenty one. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for the FY twenty-twenty, twenty twenty-one in the amount of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and two cents, and approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty-twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in the amount of four hundred and thirty-four thousand, thirty-five dollars and twenty cents. Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's consent docket. Call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item thirteen, consider approval of a resolution number nine-nine-nine-two-one, adopting a one-dollar fee to each residential utility account for the purpose of storm damage cleanup.
Vice Mayor and Trustees, as you all remember, this past winter, as a result of an ice storm, residents had major tree damage, which resulted in additional cost to the city in order to have the debris hauled off. We would like to propose charging an additional dollar per month to residential customers' utility bills, which would fund a storm cleanup account for similar future events, should they occur. Excuse me, be glad to answer any questions you might have.
So this would go into a special account, then?
Yes, sir.
For that purpose?
How many thousands a month will this be? Do we know?
Uh, approximately twenty-five thousand a month.
Okay.
So, the, well, we, we budgeted three hundred thousand for the year, and so, so that's, you know, our goal is to build that up over time, and it's a, it's a segregated fund, so it would only be used for storm cleanups.
Do we know how much we had to spend in this last crazy ice storm that we had?
Is that four point one million or something like that?
Two, two point eight.
Or two point, okay.
Ooh, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Say that again. Two point eight million.
Two point eight million.
So, in the event of a storm cleanup and we don't have enough funds in here, we'll just pull out of general money like we did this last year? Is that correct?
Uh, we, we could do that, or we could, we could borrow and repay, I mean, whatever seems to make the mess, the best financial sense at the time, so, yeah.
At the time, yeah, okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
I know I've said this before, I just want to add to it, we cleaned up faster than almost any city around us. I know that I saw debris for months afterwards, so thank you, guys.
Vice Mayor and Council, to interrupt for just a second, just for your information, we've been placed under a severe thunderstorm warning for a little storm that's located over by the airport. It's just drifting this way, the threats listed by the Weather Service are sixty-mile an hour winds and a little bit of hail. I really don't think it's going to affect us too much, but I did want you to be aware of it.
My, my, my phone was doing nuts. Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority Meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item fourteen is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of a regular Moore Risk Management Meeting held August second, twenty twenty one. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures of FY twenty-twenty-one, twenty twenty-two in the amount of six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and seven cents.
Motion we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's consent docket. Call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting.
Okay, roll call, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here. Item sixteen will be our consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting held July nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Item passes. We'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority Meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Let the record show that all members present before are now still present. Item seventeen is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. I don't have anyone signed up. Would anyone care to speak? Very good. Item B is items from the city council or trustee.
So I've received a couple of calls here in the past week about mowing, kind of in the Ward Two area. I did notice on my way here that along Twenty-seventh, and there were some areas along Twelfth that were mowed today, the drainage channel through East Hills, I mean, is taller than I am, and so I know we've struggled with some labor issues and, and all that, but hopefully we can get caught up on that since we're having some dry time right now.
Are we understaffed right now, Brooks, in the maintenance department?
I think it was more the contract.
The, the contractors are the, are the, are the main problem, and we're in the process of getting that resolved, so.
Okay, well, I mean, they're, if they're having a hard time finding work, I feel like that's a universal issue.
Yeah, and I would, I would just echo what Melissa had said and hope that, help them look, figure it out.
Now, we'll, uh...
Get goats or cows or something out there.
We'll, we'll get it caught up.
All right, thanks. And I just had one, I had a, a quick thing, that mowing that Melissa just talked about, but also, I've started a different job, and so I'll probably be working during the daytime, and I'm going to need help with ACOG monthly meetings. I know, right now, I'll be doing some training for a little bit, so I won't be able to go to the one in August, and I'll be asking all of you, and it would be great if, if everybody could look at your calendars and maybe, uh...
What date is that, what date?
It's the last Thursday of every month.
Okay.
And, um...
What time is the meeting?
They start at one o'clock, and you need to at least be there for the first two meetings. We have to have a quorum, and sometimes Norman isn't there, and then that can throw us out of quorum if, if Moore were also to not be there, and it really puts them in a bind. So if there's anybody that can do it this month, that would be great. Maybe by September, I'll know a little bit more about my schedule, and I'll pass it on to Brooks, and he can let everybody know, but I would just ask if y'all could look at your calendars and, and help with that, it would be great.
How long does it usually last?
It can, it's till three, maybe, maybe a little bit longer. It's, I mean, they're kind of long meetings, um, so...
Yeah, let us know on September, too. I know I can't do August, but I can.
I might be able to do August, I'll let you know.
Vice Mayor and Council, the new spin bikes are in at the station, so. Vice Mayor and Council, the new spin bikes are in at the station, so.
They look great. They look great.
Good. Good.
So we're excited about that. The new cardio equipment should be delivered mid-October, so we're excited about that also. So we're excited about that. The new cardio equipment should be delivered mid-October, so we're excited about that also. Construction has started on Eastern, south of Nineteenth Street to Thirty-Fourth Street, and so that will go on for probably another month. Construction has started on Eastern, south of Nineteenth Street to Thirty-Fourth Street, and so that will go on for probably another month. So that's moving along. Hopefully the weather cooperates. So that's moving along. Hopefully the weather cooperates. And then, as you know, on August third, we had National Night Out, had a great event, a lot of people there, a lot of vendors, everyone seemed to have a good time, so congratulations to everyone that helped put that on. And then, as you know, on August third, we had National Night Out, had a great event, a lot of people there, a lot of vendors, everyone seemed to have a good time, so congratulations to everyone that helped put that on.
Good job. Good job. Okay, item eighteen is executive session. Section three oh seven, Title twenty-five Oklahoma Statute permits the public body to meet in executive session for certain specified reasons, under certain specified conditions. Okay, item eighteen is the executive session. Section three oh seven, Title twenty-five Oklahoma Statute permits the public body to meet in executive session for certain specified reasons, under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the City Attorney that the City Council may consider and adopt a motion to meet in executive session to discuss the following items. It is the opinion of the City Attorney that the City Council may consider and adopt a motion to meet in executive session to discuss the following items. Item A is consider approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two contract between the City of Moore and the IAFF Local two oh four seven, as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three oh seven, B two. Item A is consider approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two contract between the City of Moore and the IAFF Local two oh four seven, as authorized by twenty-five Oklahoma Statute three oh seven, B two. Motion we convene to executive session. Motion we convene to executive session.
Second. Second.
Okay, would you call for the vote, please? Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie. Danielle McKenzie.
Yes. Yes.
Jason Blair. Jason Blair.
Yes. Yes.
Melissa Hunt. Melissa Hunt.
Yes. Yes.
Adam Webb. Adam Webb.
Yes. Yes.
Mark Ham. Mark Ham.
Yes. Yes.
Louis Williams. Louis Williams.
Yes, we are convened to executive session. Yes, we are convened to executive session.
...